Good evening. It's 6:35, and this is a meeting of the... This is Monday, December 9th, 2024, and this is a meeting of the Community Economic Development Committee. On my right is Mrs. Snead, and on my left, Mr. Pierce. And my name is Jeff Schilling, and I'm the chair. And tonight, we are going to bring back our discussion. American Structure Point has a... We'd asked them for some help on this... In this particular item. Recommendations concerning the use of multi-use recreational trails around borders, new subdivisions, and some other areas. And it was my request, or maybe we were busy the last couple of times doing some other things, and now we're trying to take this up again. And I don't know if, Mr. Tiddrington, you want to weigh in on this at all?
Well, only to... My recollection is not that we asked American Structure Point to give us some recommendations. It was merely to respond and react to some of your questions and concerns.
Right.
Which is what you have in front of you.
Right.
Those are not necessarily recommendations. Their recommendations are the ones that we had communicated the last time we talked, which was that, you know, we have the Complete Streets map that the council still has to evaluate and adopt. We have the Comprehensive Plan that's now in place, and we are also looking at the Unified Development Code, or formerly known as the Zoning Code, as well as the subdivision regs that are now being looked at, and recommended revisions are being put together for some future comments and, you know, public involvement next year.
Okay. We appreciate that. Yeah, and again, looking at that, I know we've gone through a lot of planning in the last year or so, but on the other hand, we went ahead and changed the zoning codes four or five times, you know, while this process has been going on, so I'm not sure there's a real reason that that would, you know, slow us down in this particular area. As I look at this and what the Structure Point said, I think that a couple of these questions may be deferred for another time. I think the ones that I would ask committee to look at to defer would be the question number two, as far as multi-use recreational trails fronting all streets inside industrial areas. I know they were talking about... One of the comments was, or the study, who said 82% of the people that work in the city of Troy, I mean, there's some places, you know, a lot of people come in from out of town, but the problem is, like I said, most people get there by some type of vehicle. And my only comment to that is because we have nothing, they have no other way to get there, you know? They have to, you know, find a vehicle transportation, or they really can't get to work. We don't have any... Many of our industrials have no sidewalks, they have... There's just no way to get there. So, but this thing, I think we can, you know, look at that maybe at another time. And then also question number three, as far as the... Along West Main Street, I've been in discussions with the ODA administration on this, and our conversations were ended abruptly, ended last week, and like I said, sometime in the future, I'd like to get, pick those back up. And, you know, but right now, the... On this area, you know, on West Main Street, looking at the proposed Complete Streets policy, again, there is no effective way for the residents of the West End to use any vehicle, anything but vehicles to get to the downtown safely. And the Complete Streets program, there's no solutions there that would happen within the next five to 10 years. And I think that is, and I'll probably look too long to wait, in my estimation, it'd be too long to wait. So, but again, I think we can, pending any further discussions with the ODA administration, I think we can, we, you know, hopefully we can get something back on track on that and proceed with some of our discussions, and maybe bring the end of this up at another committee meeting. So I think what we'd like to do is, if it's okay with the other two committee members, just to focus on the subdivisions, putting these multi-use recreational trails in the subdivisions. Would that, are you...
I'm...
Would that sound like a good idea tonight?
I'm just wondering what our goal would be ahead of American Structure Point's recommendations on zoning code amendments and comprehensive plans.
Okay. Well, first thing, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just, yeah, I guess that's my question. I don't know what the end result of that discussion would be.
And that's a good question. And again, I think, I think the end result here is, again, as I said before, is that we have, we have no qualms about holding back on changing zoning codes and this type of thing, and this really goes to subdivision construction, which is really not a zoning issue, it's more of a, like a construction issue as far as plan design and this type of thing, but it does, it has, it really has no bearing on the zoning codes. The zoning codes are going to determine where the subdivisions are going to go, and then it's a matter of how are these, how are these subdivisions going to be designed? And this is an area that I think that we can, we can... Looking at what Structure Point gave us back, I think we can, we can say that, I think that they have, it's a very favorable report, that they think that this is something that probably should be included. And again, as I said before, as you know, you look around in other areas, both here in Ohio, and I spend a lot of time in Indiana, and, you know, you look at some of these more progressive communities, and they all have these, they all have these multi-use trails fronting their subdivisions. So I think it's something that we ought to look at. I mean, we've asked the ODA administration before to add these things into the negotiations, and they've come back and said, "Well, it's not in the building code, so we can't negotiate it," but yet, then they ask us to hold off because they try to negotiate these things. And then, but we look at, we've got four or five subdivisions in progress right now, none of this stuff is included. And so how much longer are we going to wait? I mean, that's, you know, so I think it's something that makes a lot of sense. Again, our main goal here is to improve people's way of getting around Troy and getting to the downtown and getting to the bike trail. And if we don't start doing this now, when do we do it? You know, we, I know we have, have some annexations that we've had, and I'm certain that those annexations are sitting around, are going to be designed around some more subdivisions, and so I think it's, you know, it's time to make, I think it's time to take a look at this thing, a very hard look at it, and that's, that's why we're talking about it tonight. Mr. Tiddrington.
Mr. Chair, just to gently correct a couple of things that you've said. First of all, I've said it previously, it's not a matter that we do not and will not refuse to negotiate, it's that we, we talk through any and all options with every developer that comes to us. If they come with a plan that meets the standard zoning and subdivision regulations, we do not have leverage other than to suggest that they can do that. Now, sometimes, we may be able to work a quid pro quo. There are some subdivisions where walking paths and multi-use rec trails have been incorporated. Halifax Developments is one example. It's not out west, I get it, but it's north, it's at least an example where we've been able to do that.
Yeah, but let me, let me clarify that, though. But Halifax has walking trails for the residents as we have, we have a subdivision, a planned unit development out on the West End, it has the same thing, but it's not located, I mean, Halifax, most of those subdivisions out in the North End town have sidewalks and curbs.
Mm-hmm.
Which we didn't include in our, in some of our subdivisions that have been built recently on the West End. Reserved Washington is a big example.
Well, and that's along the major right of, or the major roadway? Yes. In the subdivision itself?
So Troy-Pipper Road's not a major, major roadway?
No, I understand what you're saying, if I can finish my thought.
Go ahead.
So, first of all, we do negotiate. We have limited ability to negotiate when it's a standard subdivision plan versus a plan development. And a plan development, every plan development comes to the Planning Commission and the, and the city council. Plan development gives everybody flexibility, and so if they, you know, if there are needs, it's not just the administration that negotiates, it's also the Planning Commission and the council that could, could negotiate if they have, have questions as well. Well, that, that power is there, okay? It has been, and it's part of the code, and that is part of the zoning code. Where, and maybe I misspoke earlier, yes, there's some zoning code changes, well, a lot of changes, and updating that is going to be done in 2025. At the same time, I will remind the council that you authorized us to amend Structure Point's contract to include a look at and a comprehensive, potentially comprehensive revision to the subdivision regs. And to your point, that's where the leverage can be increased as new developments come in, and, you know, we, where it may be an optional infrastructure improvement, such as rec trails, multi-use paths, sidewalks, along the, in the case of the reserves, the backyards along Washington that is, are not in place right now, a future iteration of the subdivision regs could make that a mandatory. I'm not saying it will or it won't, but that's the time that, that we would do that. The other thing that I would mention, since you've mentioned it a couple of times, is, yes, periodically, we, the Planning Commission or the administration will recommend modification to the zoning code to, to correct an immediate concern, make, clarify vague language, et cetera. In this case, and in that, and when we've done that, it's because we needed to address something, and we don't have a larger project that can address it, like we do with the zoning code and the subdivision regs. There are things in the zoning code that we would like to have, have it updated, but we've deferred those because we are doing, you know, because Structure Point is doing this, this larger project. This is one of those elements that we've asked them to look at in the subdivision reg portion of the work that they're going to be doing in 2025. So, to simply say that, well, we've, we've done, or we've made changes to zoning code or the subdivision regs in a vacuum, by themselves, piecemeal, while that's correct, it was in the absence of a larger project, which is the opportunity we have now, so we can look at everything at once and present a comprehensive update to the council in 2025.
Okay. Okay.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Do we have an estimated, I know I've asked this before, but an estimated time that we'll have that?
So you should have, I believe, the first half of 2025, they're, they've been continuing to work on it. We're meeting internally every two weeks to discuss different elements of it, different chapters and updates. I know that Structure Point is coming to the Planning Commission for an update next week?
Wednesday.
This Wednesday or next Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
This Wednesday? Okay. It all blends together, sorry. And so they're doing those periodic updates, just like they, they did with the Comprehensive Plan. I apologize, I don't have a, we have a schedule, I can get that to the committee, we can email that to you, I don't have that off the top of my head, though.
Okay. I appreciate it.
But it's not the end of 2025, it's first half of 2025.
Okay.
Well, again, I think that, in this case, I think, I would, I would like to see, especially in the subdivision area, to have these, these multi-use recreational trails, you know, part of the planning process. And the only way, as you said, you know, your hands are tied when a, when a plan comes in that meets the current building code subdivision regulations. That's not up for negotiation. We had one PUD, Plan Development, come in, and I don't think that, thinking out there on National Road, that was, that was a planned unit development, and I don't believe that that got any recreational trails was added to that when we had the opportunity to maybe add that. And so again, I think it's, we as council have to take the lead in this and make sure that these things are, are done sooner than later. I, you know, it just, it just makes sense. Like I say, we've got, I know we've got some other subdivisions under plans because of the annexations that have happened, and I, you know, we're going to let another two or three subdivisions come in and not have these things. And then we're, you know, then we're looking at, you know, how long is it going to take to get these things constructed? If we don't do it now, when are we going to do it? You know, again, we've had, you know, our philosophy has been better later than sooner, and so we have streets that, again, that, you know, just now, after 40, 50 years, are starting, or their infrastructure is being completed. And I think that this is important enough to get this thing in, in the plans now. And again, Structure Point essentially says that they're going to do it anyway, so we might as well go ahead and get it done.
Well, and, and I will say that we, we have not seen any, any plans yet on those recent annexations, but however, where I don't believe that we're going to take the same approach as we did with reserves, because subdivision is, regs do have a, not very vague requirement regarding at least sidewalks. It's where you go from sidewalks and you change them into, you know, double-wide rec trails or multi-use paths, that we start to lose much more of our leverage on the standard subdivisions.
But if it's, if it's in the regulations, then you don't have anything, you're not leveraging anything because you're not negotiating it. If somebody comes, if, I know it was a hard plan, if the, if the subdivision plans require these multi-use recreational trails fronting the subdivisions along, along the sides where they have access, they're along a road, you know, then, as you say, you can't negotiate that. That's, that's part of the regulations, they have to, they have to do that. And that's the situation that we're in. I don't want these things to be negotiated into the future because I want them in the regulations, so they have to do them.
I, I understand. I just wanted to clarify that, you know, we do have some leverage. We have not nearly as much leverage with a standard subdivision application as we do a PD.
Right. And that's why, that's why I'm, I'm pressing this issue, because again, I want these in, I would like to see this in the regulations now, because I think it's important going forward, that the city focus, start to focus on developing all of the ways of transportation for people to get around. And again, the whole idea is, is to help these people get onto our tremendous bike trail system that runs through our city, and it means that there's going to be more people downtown and less traffic, because if they can get on, you know, especially in the summertime, they can get on the, you know, use these, these trails and get on the, get it, use them to get downtown, you know, they don't need to park, they can, they can, I say, all their uses, and like I say, I think we're, you know, with, with the Riverwalk thing that we're trying to get done, you know, with the access to the downtown, I think that's just a very easy way for this, for the, for our people to do it, but we've got to start building these things now. It's not, you know, it's just not, it's just not, oh, you know, if we ever get around to it, you know, there's, it's, it's something that we have to concentrate on now. And as I say, other cities have done it, it's worked very, very well. Again, like I say, you can go to Dublin, you can go, there's a number of cities in Ohio that have this, a number of cities in Indiana, and, you know, you see it, and it's, wow, you know, they got this thing, these things are done. And it's, as the subdivisions and things are developed, industrials, I was over in, you know, writing for Pelotania this year, and I got over in, near the new Amazon Distribution Center on Beach, Beach Road, and on the east side of Columbus, and fronting this Amazon Distribution Center was a three-mile-long recreational trail, had just been recently built. And again, this is, this is the type of stuff we've got to start doing, or we'll never get it done. And this is the time, this is the time I think we can step up and say, we want to start getting, looking at this and getting it built in there or regulations.
Um, I don't see...
And the thing is, it doesn't cost the city anything.
I would just, that's the point I was going to bring up, that I would disagree with. I think they made mention in some of their responses to questions that, once these recreational trails are put in, there is a maintenance cost per year.
Yes.
That's something to consider if we want to have connections, that could be a city cost, that's something to consider. So to me, I understand your passion for, for bike trails, and, and that's great, but I don't think that council, as a council, other than adopting a comprehensive plan and complete streets, has said that we want to be, at this point, quite that aggressive in putting this number of recreational trails in without seeing a, and that's what I want to see, is a complete, comprehensive look at our subdivision regulations, our zoning code, and what this plan would look like citywide. I, I just don't think that we can just arbitrarily say that we're going to start including requirements for recreational trails in subdivisions separately from taking a look at that more comprehensive look at our zoning code.
And I understand your concern, Mrs. Snead, and I, having a user of our recreational trail system, I can tell you, to best of my knowledge, other than through grant applications and approvals of grants, the city of Troy has put, probably has not put a whole lot into our recreational trail system as far as concerned, but even if it is, and let's say that we add, you know, another, and $2,000 to $3,000 a year, I think is way, I'm thinking, my estimation is, is that it would be $2,000 to $3,000 every 10 years per mile. And so we add 10 miles of, of trails, and we're talking, so we're talking $20,000 over 10 years, I think we can afford that.
And, and that would certainly be something that council could speak to.
Well, then that's why I'm asking, then that's why I'm asking the committee to take a look at this, so we can get it before the entire council to take a look at.
And I'm just telling you, I'm not willing to look at it separate from getting our, the things we're expecting from American Structure Point. I'm not willing to look at it in isolation for subdivision regulations in isolation.
Mr. Pierce, what's your thought on this?
My understanding is that American Structure Point provides value of knowledge and understanding and expertise in being able to, helping us to manage the cost of this while designing and creating recreational trails, and they're going to do that when they release the overall plan. So if we look at the Comprehensive Plan, we can take a look at the spines that they talk about, that will help us have these recreational trails, but not spend as much money doing it, because we do have that maintenance cost, we're going to go into winter, there's going to be the cost of making sure the snow is removed, there's no ice, or limited amount of ice on these trails. So they're going to help us in that planning phase. I believe you'll see a lot of what you want, just not yet. You may not see as many miles of recreational trails as what you would prefer, but I think you're going to see a lot of it.
Do we have any comments from other council people?
The only comment that I, excuse me, I would have is that I can understand Mrs. Snead's point of view, and I don't think you can look at this in a vacuum, so I think the whole package is, would be the prudent way to do it. Of course, now, I had a question for you particularly off of this, because I didn't understand whether it was Structure Point or just coming from something that you had mentioned, that on these particular roadways that, that are mentioned in this document, do you look at the city to go ahead and put the trail, recreation trail, or a widened sidewalk in them prior to, on an open piece of land, before something got sold, or a business went in, or housing, or something like that? Is that what you're also mentioning?
No, I, again, I think that the, this is, this would be a cost that the, the installation of these things would be paid for by the developer.
Yes.
Okay? And I say, like I say, now there are, you know, we've got a lot of, lot of land, and I, example, I can, I go back to West Main Street, and, you know, we have a lot of, there's no sidewalks out there in some of the areas along West Main Street on the, not on the south side, but on the north side. And so the question is, who pays for that? You know, and again, we're talking about, one, part of our discussions here over the last couple of weeks is, is that, you know, the state of Ohio is going to come in and redo the, the bridge over the I-75 on West Main Street, and there's talk about putting in sidewalks in. And so then the question is, you know, first of all, how far do those sidewalks go? And then the other thing is, is that if, can we ask them to, the state to plan these recreational trails instead of sidewalks, and again, to start building that link along West Main Street? And I am certain that, that if we ask for that, we would pay for the cost differential between sidewalks and a recreational trail. And that may be the, the situation in some other areas, I don't know, but I say, again, I think that as the new subdivisions come in, and, and our regulations say recreational trails, that's got, you got to build those, then that's going to be paid for by the subdivisions, and the net result is, is the city is going to get something and not, you know, obviously the way we like to do things has somebody else pay for it, you know?
And Mr. Chair, I think the, the other thing to keep in mind, and the reason that Ameri, one of the things that American Structure Point can comment on as part of their overall process is, there are, there's a lot of different factors, and there's a lot of different direct and indirect costs that may or may not come out of a hard and fast, 100% of the time, you must put in rec trails. For example, you mentioned the bridge over 75. Well, it's concrete now that's there, and so you're not going to connect, you're not going to be able to connect a 10-foot-wide rec trail to a 5-foot-wide bridge sidewalk over the bridge itself, back to, you know, a rec trail, and then back to, to sidewalk, which may or may not be there. If there's not anything there right now, if it's concrete, our, our practice has been anyway, that, you know, if it's concrete and it's part of the assessment program, it's assessed back to the property owner. You look at north, the north side of West Main Street as part of that overlay project that we're doing out to Washington, some of those properties are pretty wide. We're talking about five-figure assessments if we were to do that. If they were not sidewalks, our, our past practice has been, if it's been rec trail, is we don't assess it back, so then that cost, that initial capital cost falls to the city in that, in that case. To Mrs. Snead's point, you know, we're not just talking about maintaining crack sealing and replacing asphalt, which may or may not occur for 10 years or 15 years after, even though they recommend that you really ought to crack seal every three or four years. You're also talking about basic maintenance that our park department or utility department would have to do anytime it, we get inclement weather, where we either have to plow or at least salt that amount of, of trail. So, you know, a one-size-fits-all is, is never recommended without some level of flexibility on all sides, particularly on our own side. And so, you know, we've, we've got to keep that in mind. We also have to keep in mind that, you know, if we do put an absolute requirement on a subdivider and a subdivision builder, you know, I'm not saying this would happen, but, you know, that is a, a cost to the developer, and depending on the type of product, the size of product, the density of that product, you know, does, does it still remain economical for them to do the development? Well, I, I understand that.
I don't care about that, I mean...
You should care because we do have a workforce housing issue in this county, in this state, and in our community in particular. We have hundreds of jobs that go unfilled, part of the reason is, is that we can't get the pop- the population to move, to move in. Now, you know, you can blame the 2008 recession, you can, you can blame all kinds of different factors, but there are very few volume builders that can or will do the type of housing that will attract either the first-time workforce housing, you know, employees, or even the second level, where somebody moves out of a smaller, older house into this product. So I'm not saying that's, that's what would happen, but there are, you know, intended consequences, but there are also potential unintended consequences by being, by doing something like this in a vacuum, and making it an absolute without any flexibility whatsoever. And looking at the zoning code and the interplay with the subdivision regs, and how those may be recommended to change and be modified and modernized, is why we think the better approach is to see what Structure Point comes back with. And we will make sure that they are including these discussions in their analysis and in their recommendations to you. Okay, any questions from the audience or staff? Yes?
Yeah, hi, I'm Steve Henderson at Dickerson Drive. Maybe instead of having a blanket requirement, what you could do is require them to provide an estimate of what the incremental cost would be for widening, wider pathway than a normal sidewalk. They have to put in a normal sidewalk anyway, okay? So you could require them to say, okay, if we required a pathway, as long as what you're suggesting, and say, okay, you're required to tell us how much more it's gonna cost to do that. Then the city can say, you can make a decision, then you can start negotiating. The city wants these pathways so much, we should pay for it. I understand that it'll make the cost of property more expensive. It may also make the property more desirable. So I don't think it has to be black and white on either way. I think it could, I think you can come up with a way, say, okay, here's, here's a reasonable way to start a discussion without having a hard and fast rule that you have to do it. Let's find out how much it'll cost, and then you can have, and I can start a dialogue that makes some sense, rather than saying, okay. And let's not wait for Structure Point to come back with a bunch of clay tablets, you know, it's like, come on. They went to the same schools we do and everything else. So, well, let's, I understand they're really nice people, they're really smart, but there's a bunch of other people, you know, they're gonna make decisions just like people do. Some of them are gonna be right, some are gonna be wrong, and my guess is they're gonna be gray, because they wanna get paid for their job. So, so let's not kid ourselves on what's gonna happen, okay? So that's my only point. Try to, you guys have to get some gray space here, for God's sakes. You're trying to make hard and fast rules on either side of the issue, and neither one of you are looking really good at it. Okay, that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And again, I say, the reason I think it, you know, as far as workplace housing, like I say, again, there's, Steve said, there's, you know, somebody that has, you know, especially on the lower end, they may appreciate another, another way to get to work. You know, they may appreciate that these, they can use, they can get on an electric bike and, you know, and ride that and get to work, you know, whereas if we don't have that, that trail, you can't get the, you can't get those electric bikes out on the street, I mean, you know, especially some of our narrower streets that we have, and in the county, the county roads and everything are fifty-five miles an hour, and.
And I understand that completely.
And so, so again, but what I'm saying is, is that, you know, most of these, I mean, you take, you take a small subdivision with fifty homes averaging three hundred thousand dollars a year, or three hundred thousand dollars a home, you know, you're talking millions of dollars that this developer is expecting to earn on this thing. And I'm thinking, you know, for whatever the cost of that extra concrete is, that's pocket change to them. But again, it's been, it's been a, all, you know, the city can't afford it, the city can't afford it. So this is a way for this, for us to get it done, get some help in paying it, and then I think that, as you say, there's, you know, the subdivision codes, the way to build subdivisions, it is black and white, because otherwise, you know, you, you know, you gotta figure out how, 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 how deep you dig the ditches for the sewers, you gotta figure out, you know, where are you gonna place the water meters, you're gonna put, you know, what type of curbs you're gonna, I mean, that's all, that's all black and white stuff that the developer has to do anyway. And so, you know, this is just, I mean, again, you know, if the subdivision has to have a sidewalk, that's black and white, you know, as long as it's not a plan, it's a unit development. Now, if you get into those, you know, then it is all, you say it is all negotiation, but, you know, when they come in with a plan and matches our subdivision building regulations, then we're done with it, we can't nego, we really, you've said you really have a hard time negotiating those types of things, and so.
Well, and.
Yes, so the only way we can do it is put it into subdivision regulations, and this is, you know, if you wanna come to Troy and build, this is what it's gonna cost you to do it.
And that's, and that's why I kinda took, took issue with your comment about the negotiations, because, again, we have negotiated, and Mr. Hendrickson jogged my memory, that was one thing I did wanna mention, that, but the direction that you were going was the developer should, should pay for whatever is required, which is why I mentioned that, well, if the developer has to pay for that, you know, even if it seems like it's a low amount, you know, in your example, trying to recoup those costs as well as sewer and water and lift stations or pump stations or whatever needs to be done, you know, you can't spread it out far enough to make the land costs low enough to then be able to put a workforce-type housing, where, where we do sometimes negotiate, particularly, well.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, I mean, we oversize things because we know there's nothing going on behind that subdivision, or we need a lift station to get this, this, I mean, we've done that, and we paid for it, and I understand that part.
And that, that is something that Structure Point will look at as well, the oversizing idea that, okay, you're, you are at a minimum required to put in five-foot-wide concrete sidewalks, we'll get an estimate of that, we have to get an estimate of that because the bonding or the escrow and everything that goes into there. So we have a good idea of what that cost is. And then if there's an estimate on, all right, now double it, change that to asphalt, and it becomes a rec trail, what's the additional cost? That's where we, we could do some kind of an oversizing agreement, but to Mr. Hendrick's point, to our point, that requires an appropriation that we don't have right now, that, that, you know, could be handled, but it would be at the city's cost, not at the developer's cost. Again, that incremental cost, not the total cost, because the minimum requirement is that they put that sidewalk, that base sidewalk in. Those are, you know, those are some things that we look at when we negotiate as well. We've never done a, an oversizing of the sidewalk into a rec trail, but to my knowledge, we haven't had a project where there was a logical and immediate ability to link. And I understand you're trying to be proactive and start at some point and then build out towards the downtown, I think is the direction you're going. But, again, that's something that needs to be worked out in the subdivision regs and have some additional language regarding oversizing, if that's the direction that the council eventually wants to take.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so let's, you know, why can't we do, I guess the question is, I would, I would still think that we could do something now on this thing, instead of, you know, letting a couple more subdivisions slide through and, you know, here we are again, you know. It just, it just is, I think it's important enough that we, it has to be in the regulations. And, you know, I know, so we, we can debate it now, we can wait six months and, you know, debate it again when we get, when, you know, the plans are submitted, but I mean, you know, looking at preliminary stuff, I mean, the complete street policy is, you know, they say there's, you know, I mean, we, there's just, somewhere we've lost the idea of getting people from the subdivisions to the downtown, or to the bike trail, so they can use that three hundred and forty miles that we have on that bike trail to their advantage for health reasons or just, you know, or again, people wanna, you know, I can't tell you how many people I talk to that ride bikes, they, oh, I didn't know you had that big of a trail in Troy, I'm gonna come, I'm gonna come to Troy and, you know, ride it. Three hundred and forty miles, we've got a bike trail, and yet, I mean, it's a huge attraction, but, again, you're sitting out there on, the hotels out there on the west end of town, they, they say, well, I'm gonna like to leave my car here and ride my bike to get on, you can't do it. You know, so we've gotta start thinking about, you know, ways to get the west end tied into the rest of, the rest of Troy, and, you know, in this, in this area. It's gotta be done. And I say, so I'm saying, we got a majority-minority report, is that what we're looking at?
I don't believe we have anything.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying, you don't wanna move forward at all, I'm saying, we can, we can take these, the recommendations that our consultants have given us and formulate that in some type of regulations.
But I would agree with Mr. Tittering, because they aren't recommendations, these are responses to questions, or discussions, they're not recommendations.
Okay, let me rephrase that, we can take the responses to these questions and have, and move that into some type of legislation that would amend our building codes, our subdivision building codes, to get these, these recreation trails set up and ready to go.
And that's what I said I can't agree to, not ahead of seeing a comprehensive look at the city and recommendations from the people we already have looking at it, not to doubt anyone else's expertise, but I do wanna hear from their expertise and experience. Those are not recommendations, that is not the entire report they're going to give to us. That is looking at three questions in isolation. So I can't, I can't make any moves based on.
And procedurally, this may sound familiar, but any changes in that regard would normally go through the Planning Commission with a recommendation to the council, and then the council would act either up or down, majority, or amend at a supermajority of seven.
Sure. So that's what I'm saying, we need to get this thing moving in that, moving down the pipeline to get this thing looked at by council.
I believe they're responsible to wait for the report, so that we can handle the finances of the city better, and get that report, knowing where their recommending tie-ins should be. They're not gonna put bike trails or recreational trails everywhere, they're gonna have them in certain areas, have that spine, so that we can move traffic safely through.
And if those subdivision regulations, recommendations come back to us, then that will be the time that they come back through Planning Commission and through this committee, or whatever committee they're assigned to, and then move ahead for a council discussion and vote.
Okay, okay, well, listen, I think we, I appreciate the discussion, I think we'll let it sit then.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
We'll write.
Is there anything else before the committee tonight?
We'll write that up as a status report, then.
Yeah.
All right, okay. Very good. Nothing else.
Thanks.